Okay. Um, can I call to order this zoning commission meeting? Someone please do roll.
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Ms. Trebelis.
Here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Avada Nula. Mr. Pierce.
All right, so we are having this meeting to continue our discussion on the Orange Township zoning code and the revisions that we are making to it. So if Robin would like to lead us off on this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Trebelis. So we went through Articles 1 through 3 last time. Thank you for that discussion. That was very helpful and productive. We are currently going through and making changes and then kind of once we get to the end, we'll go over everything kind of one more time just to say, you know, what, go over what we changed. But want to keep plowing forward. So that takes us to Article 4, which is our discussion of the districts and zones. So I imagine a lot of our discussions tonight will center around the use table and looking at what uses go in what districts. But we'll start with Article 4, which just gives an overview of what each district is. So you'll see that on Article 4 on the second page there. There's a table with each district and zone and just kind of a brief overview of what that zone, what that district is intended for. So as a reminder, most of these are straight districts. I will mention when they are not straight zoning districts, but unless otherwise noted, they are straight zoning districts, which again, we are not planning on rezoning property to these districts as part of this, but these will be options for property owners to rezone to in the future. So starting off with the commercial corridor, it's a general commercial zone. The language is a wide variety of commercial uses in support of congregational and institutional uses, among others, across existing and planned commercial corridors. So it's there, it's a pretty wide range of commercial uses. It can accommodate both the auto-oriented development and provide flexibility for pedestrian-oriented development. Campus institutional or CI, and bear with me, we'll look at this down the line. It can be confusing with some of these abbreviations because we have both a CI and a CL. So those can easily get confused, but there is a distinction between the CI and CL. So CI is the campus institutional zone, provides standards for site flexibility, connectivity, green space, and public spaces in support of institutional and campus-type developments. I do want to have more discussion on this one later. We'll circle back around to this, but the goal for this zone was really for kind of public and semi-public uses. So things like government buildings would fit nicely into this zone. Utilities, churches, schools, things of those, again, public or semi-public use was really the goal in drafting this.
So where do like hospitals or assisted senior living, is that considered, could consider institutional or is that considered?
So I believe those would, those could fall into either.
Okay.
I believe they are permitted in both. Again, we'll circle back around because I do want to hone in on the, that campus institutional zone and get some feedback from you all.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
A little bit. Community living zone is the CL. So that's basically the multifamily zone. It would be multifamily straight district as opposed to our current multifamily planned residential district. The flex employment zone, the FE, that's really our equivalent to an industrial district. It's not heavy industry, you know, it's not, it's not mining or kind of combination of raw materials, but light industrial, research and development tech office does allow generally for commercial uses as well, but it's really kind of geared towards that, you know, Green Meadows corridor in particular, along the east side of 23 there. Lewis Center Village District is specifically geared towards that old village of Lewis Center area. We had some good discussion on this when we did our work sessions earlier in the year that the commission's general feedback was to try to make this geographically targeted because we didn't want somebody on the other opposite end of the township, you know, trying to rezone to Lewis Center Village. So we kicked around some different ideas to try to make that work. And what we ended up landing on in this draft was to use it as an overlay district, which is good for a number of reasons. One is that it, it, it does allow us to limit it geographically. And so it's, it's a very defined, and there is a map in the, in the zoning resolution itself, which specifically says, you know, these parcels can use this overlay and no other parcels can do that. So it does target it geographically. It also allows for a bit of an expedited process because the, the goal of this district was to provide the Lewis Center Village homeowners and residents and business owners with some flexibility because currently it's all zoned FART 1. And if they want to do anything, then they need a slew of variances. And so this was to give them some more flexibility with their properties. So instead of them having to go through a variance process or a full rezoning, we thought kind of a happy medium was to have it as an overlay district where they can do things a little more expediently, pull down that cloud zoning for whatever their project may be. Again, I'll get into that a little bit more later, but it would allow them to be heard by this commission, by the zoning commission, and have just kind of a one-stop approval there.
Are there any standards for Lewis Center with respect to setbacks and?
Yes, so that, that would all be included in the overlay district text. And I do want to talk more about that once we get into the meeting.
Backline, yeah, as long as there's standards, then it makes sense for an overlay that who cares what's going to come next and just opt to abide by these standards that were already set.
Yep.
That's fine.
Mixed-use district, again, pretty self-explanatory. It is a mix of commercial and residential uses. It, it's designed to be pretty flexible. Obviously, the, the commercial uses that are permitted in the mixed use tend to be more of the, the neighborhood commercial. We're not, you know, proposing things like fuel centers and things like that in that mixed use.
But does this mean something like Evans Farm would be nowadays under a mixed-use district, would that still require creative zoning like we did in the past?
So the, the goal is that they, if a project like that came along, they could probably use the mixed-use district. If they felt like that didn't work for whatever reason, then they could do it as a planned unit development. But in theory, we're trying to craft this mixed-use district so that it would encompass, you know, hopefully what somebody would want out of a mixed-use development. Neighborhood zone is our basic single-family district. Again, it would, you know, we had kind of envisioned this as rezoning all existing neighborhoods to the neighborhood zone, so we tried to craft those standards appropriately. Now that we're not looking at rezoning everybody's house in Orange Township, the neighborhood zone, you know, again, it's more setting things up for the future so that future residential developments could rezone to the neighborhood zone and do a straight district zoning instead of the planned unit development. Did you have a question, Garfield?
Yeah, what I don't see, I think I asked you this time, this one last time also, was I don't see any industrial district on this.
They have light.
Light industrial.
Yeah.
We do not have a provision for, let's say, 15, 20 years down the line when we have a particular, it's heavy industrial, but it doesn't really pollute anything, let's say. Would we consider that as heavy industrial, like would not be permitted in our zoning? Because we don't even have a category like that.
I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, that we, all uses would have to be permitted in some fashion, whether that's a conditional use or, so if there was a heavy industrial use, that would have to be able to fit with parameters in one of these districts? Does that answer your question? Is that fair?
And I think, so just because you don't have a separate heavy industrial section, I think you folks, on your permitted, or on your use chart, is there, do you have more heavy industrial? There are none?
No. So that's why I was curious.
I have a question about that anyway, when we get to that.
So technically industrial, we do have as a kind of, kind of the same category, and it would be a condition that's permitted in the flexing point. So it's not outright permitted, but it's conditionally permitted. And again, if they, if they don't feel that the flexing point zone is right for that type of development, they could also do it as a plan.
Okay.
That's kind of meant to give that release of value.
Yeah.
It's something, you know, we're trying to craft all these categories so that it catches just about everything, but just in case it doesn't, I'll do it.
No.
So there is a mechanism to get to it, to have an industrial project, but obviously no guarantee it has to, in terms of having it to the conditional use.
So it falls back on the PUD if he, if it doesn't?
Or it's a conditional and what, what is sort of our light industrial district, so which, to be honest, I'm happy with because depending upon the amount of noise or noise pollution, emissions, whatever, I think it should be considered on sort of like a conditional use basis, considering what it might be neighboring.
Sure.
Just a reminder, you can move the microphones a little closer to you if possible. It's, it's a little too far when you lean back like that. I don't, it doesn't capture the audio as well, so, sorry. We're working on fixing that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, so next is the planned unit development. So again, that government will listen a little bit more later, is to provide that flexibility for unique projects. Both the goals are not planned and cannot be accomplished under the developed district. So again, it's meant to do that, that catch-all, but hopefully when we're creating these big districts, most developments can choose from that name of options. But if there's something that you need, or the property, or something that warrants a planned unit development, a specific development plan for a specific parcel, then they have that option. Again, there's more later, but it's one plan in the district instead of how we have separated out now, where we have a single-family plan. It's all the subcategories are away and just be one. And lastly, is the farm residential, these FART 1, which formerly we had in this draft, it was rural residential. So because it's a straight zone that exists within the township currently, we're not going to go through the process of changing the name. But essentially, the properties that are at FART 1 now would stay at FART 1. It's the same general survey district, but we are hoping to change some of the development standards, so we'll get it to that one. So without getting into new divisions in these districts as are before, does anyone have any general questions about how the districts are set up or anything that popped
All right, I think the commission's good if we want to move on to Article 5.
Yeah.
All right, so along with Article 5 is that, that use table that goes through, building district that we just discussed, and then you have the uses. As a reminder, if the building circle is in that building district, then it's a permitted use. If it's a hollow circle, that's a conditional use. And then if it's blank in that section, then it would not be permitted at all. Julie, so I'm not talking the whole time. Can you give a very quick overview of what a conditional use is?
Absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. So, and it's good to see everyone again. So in terms of conditional uses, so obviously in a district, you've got a list of permitted uses, and those are things that the zoning commission and the trustees basically have identified as, you know what, we, this, this type of use works in this district regardless of any other factors. A conditional use, and there's usually a, a list of conditional uses, those are, are uses that you folks will identify as specific uses that you could envision working in that district, but maybe not in every situation. And so if someone comes in and wants to operate something as a conditional use, they have to go before your Board of Zoning Appeals and basically present what they're going to do, what their conditional use is going to be, how they're going to operate, and, and the BZA then makes a, a judgment call of whether or not they think the proposal is appropriate for that district. The example that, that I like to give, it's common for a residential straight district to have as a conditional use, you know, they might have a school, they might have a, you know, maybe a grocery store or that type of thing. But you could imagine a situation where, you know, maybe, maybe an elementary school would work for a particular district, but maybe not the Ohio State University would work for a particular district. So it's a situation where, yeah, we can, there could be, these uses might work, but we don't want to say any school or particular use that falls in that category automatically has a green light. We just want to make sure they go through an extra layer of review. We just talked about industrial uses. Obviously, that's something that you need to, you need to find somewhere for industri, heavy industrial uses to fit in your zoning resolution. As Robin said, industrial uses have been identified as a conditional use in specific districts, so that way it gives the township an extra layer of review for a specific project. You're welcome.
So, quick question, I mean, can you give me what is the exact definition of small solar facility?
Yeah, so again, we can. So this is one where we have actual definitions, so in theory, every use that we're seeing in that chart has a definition.
That's what I was going to recommend, so it's clear.
Yeah.
So there's a few, two seconds that we are still looking to define solar, because this is essentially, you know, having solar regulations currently.
It would include wind as well. Wind arrays seem to be popular in certain areas of Ohio and Pennsylvania.
So small solar facility, we do have, we do have a definition for it, which is one of the ones that we have looked at addressing, tighten up a little bit. A small solar facility, solar energy system, with several connections that are incorporated and designed for operation of integrated capacity with less than 5 megawatts.
Okay, so if I have my house or my business and I want to install solar panels on top of my carport or my business, I want to install solar panels on the roof or, you know, is that considered a small solar facility or is that something that I can add to my business to power my parking lot lights or something?
So, and this is where we need to read over definitions. The, the goal is, so we have a separate category for integrated solar energy systems, which is that, that building, that, you know, building that incorporates solar panels. So what we want to do is make sure that it doesn't overlap with that small solar facility definition.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking is something where you have a solar facility that is predominantly for use on-site as opposed to a solar facility that is producing energy for large-scale neighborhood or production use versus I have a small facility on-site to power my business and then if there's excess, it may or may not go back into the grid.
I mean, there is no reason why not to put back into the grid, there is net metering in Ohio, so.
Yeah, I know there's, it'd be great, I know there's some complications with AEP and other groups, but, yeah. Grimacrisy aside, yes, it would be ideal. Can we have the public speak? Although, or should we have a spot at the?
Feel free. Name?
Mark Hayman. I'm wondering about the difference between rooftop solar and integrated solar. So rooftop would fall into the definition, integrated solar system. So the full definition, a solar energy system that's incorporated into, or process-made building materials, not, not the, for example, systems made with material for those. Roofing, shingle, side materials on these, that, including, there's a leading of that definition that is ordered, sometimes it's on top of the roof.
Well, I was going to say, they are. Yeah, there can be panels on top of the roof, which would be roof-mounted as opposed to panels that are integrated into shingle systems or canopy systems or into your roofing material.
But I, I think the goal is for us to tighten up those definitions, so there's a, possibly a learning, you know, and there's a, there's a feedback on this, but we just want to make sure there's a distinction between, you know, a small solar farm that has 20 megawatts and something. For example, there's, 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 they've got four, they've got, they've got four, they've got, 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 they've[1444.12]
So it's possible, so I would strongly recommend that you have conditional use for majority of these cases.
What we've, what we've discussed, and in terms of the roof-mounted and the integrated, in terms of the, you know, that lends itself more towards the individual use, but on the ground-mounted side, you could imagine a situation where someone might, I mean, it's lot coverage and someone might want to put all, you know, no grass, just all ground-mounted solar panels, and, and so our thought has been, or at least our discussion's been, okay, in terms of, you know, ground-mounted, at some point, it probably should be a conditional use, so you need to come in and you need to get some extra approval, if that's what you wanna do. And then, we've kind of created a catch-all of, other than these smaller things, you know, if you want these larger, but still a small solar facility, you need to come in and, and apply for a conditional use permit.
Yeah, AEP has really, or, or Senate has really clarified that, Ohio Senate, anything less than fifty megawatts can go almost anywhere, so, yeah.
Julie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but so we do not really have authority to regulate above fifty megawatts?
Exactly.
Correct, you're, you're exactly right, that above fifty, it's, we're not, nobody's in this room dealing with that. This only relates to regulation of small facilities under fifty, and that can go anywhere from, again, the solar panels on your house, to, you know, a fifty, just under fifty megawatt facility is still a pretty big, or could be a very big facility.
Each megawatt requires about five to seven acres, so.
Wow, is it really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
It's not that simple.
And so, if I'm way off base here, then please give me some direction on this, but I think my general thinking is, you know, if somebody is looking to use solar for their, for their personal property, for one property, generally that should either be permitted or maybe a conditional use, with some guidelines there, but if it's, you know, if it's something that's going to have multiple properties, that is more of a true solar farm, then that's where it should get into more rigorous.
Here is my question, probably for Julie, I think, legal counsel. Would this, would the HOA ownership across the neighborhoods see as this taking away power from them and, and permitting it at the zoning code, rather than, right now, HOA is doing that permitting. Would they see it that way, or can you give us some sense of what would be the repercussions if any HOA says, "You're taking away power from us to home rule"?
So the, and, and it's, it's unique in going through this process and having these discussions with Rob, and there've been multiple things where, where, you know, I've asked the question of, "Well, other townships do X, Y, and Z", and he's like, "We don't do that, the HOAs, you know, your HOAs must, must deal with a lot, quite frankly, just because of what's in your zoning resolution hasn't been." So what I will say is, your, your property owners will have to, they will have to be in conformance with both. So they will have to be in compliance with the zoning resolution and their HOA deed restrictions. And so, if someone comes to the township and asks for not just solar panels, but if it's a fence, if it's deck or anything, and, and that's always been the case. But I think in this situation, folks are probably gonna have to start coming to the township, if they need to get a permit for their solar panels, they're gonna have to make sure that they're in compliance with both.
It would seem that the developer walking in, what the particular developer would have to say, "We really want to be able to use solar panels," so then it gets included in the HOA. Because if you let it, the HOA to their own situation, which we've done, which is fine, they have all the power, then they can decide, "No, we want none of it." Wouldn't that have to be the case, from the developer point of view, and have it written in from the start?
So, keeping on the, the solar panel discussion, I think it was, it might have been a year and a half, it might have been close to two years ago, Ohio changed the laws with respect to HOAs and condominiums and their abilities to regulate solar panels. And so, so this conversation is a little different than any other conversation we may have with, with an HOA or a condo association. But, but now, the law says that unless there's something specifically in your deed restriction that prevents a solar panel from going in, they have to approve it, they can't, they can't prevent you from putting up a solar panel.
If the HOA wrote it in from the start, then they can do it.
Yep, yep.
They can add it also, they can add.
They can add it, but they can also restrict it, they still have, they still have all the power. At the end of the day, the HOA still has all, has all the power.
Well, if the deed restriction doesn't give them the power, then, if the deed restriction is silent, then, then the owner can put up a solar panel.
Yeah, but so they would have to amend the HOA, which would require all owners getting together and agreeing to vote on something, and having whatever the bylaws say, the majority needs to pass to change the HOA regulations.
Well, the good news is, we haven't been to that too much, because we've let it up to whatever your HOA decisions are, and we have stayed out of it.
And that is where I think we are going to run into with this more.
And I also think that's kind of a better position, but if we can't, then yes, it needs to be written up properly.
Well, and what I will say is, if the township does not want to address the personal, kind of what I'll call the personal use solar panels, you don't have to in your zoning resolution. This is just one way of doing it, but the, but obviously, if it, it's silent, then that means that, you know, there's an argument that you have not restricted those things, which you haven't in the past, and it hasn't been a problem, but while you're asking the question of, "Should we make changes?", "What possible issues could arise?", "What possible complaints?", then, then that's, now, that's why we're asking.
I could see there being issues with ground-mounted solar panels.
Oh, absolutely.
Between neighbors.
Absolutely, if you decide to take up, take up your entire yard with solar panels.
And then water runoff issues and.
And again, I'm, I'm not sure if the HOAs have even had thought of this, of this stuff yet.
So if rooftop solar panels for, I guess residential is not in the code, then it's just not enforced.
Correct, yeah, I'm just making it clear that.
Yeah.
And so, my goal is from an administrative standpoint, would be, I don't want any permits for, not, right, I don't, we don't have standards. You there. So I don't want to get into that business, but I think, again, that's just making, we want to make sure our definitions are clear and separate, so that, uh, the matter that, uh, our integrated solar systems can be separated out from the ground outfit, which I agree is more, makes it available.
It is a thorn issue, for sure. And coming to the next one, I know solar associated with a battery, now that is a bigger issue, because it has safety concerns. Batteries do have safety concerns, because you can, yeah, so how are we dealing with that?
So we don't do zoning, uh, when, my understanding is when solar panels are installed, they do require building permits.
Yeah.
And so that's when that level of electric review comes into play, but that's not really something that, I mean, I'm not qualified to, to review something, so electrical system and batteries, that, that's something that, that's fully, should be, should be.
Building and safety department.
Yeah.
That's what they're called.
One thing I remember about it is the concept of community solar, this was, uh, I did this, because developers didn't want to put it underground, and they said something a lot, say, like, say, uh, solar panels, which are considered an amenity to the community, because everybody gets a share of solar energy that is generated right there in the neighborhood, before they actually, it's, or whatever. So, some means of making this sort of be on the top rate for a benefit like that would be, certainly, I would want to be a conditional use, to be one of those, all those, that.
Technology has to change, the solar panels aren't nearly efficient enough to operate in a, in a, in a city that has three hundred and forty days a year that was clouds. I, I don't think we have that to fear here in Ohio with the solar panels.
Yes, but by the same token, I know.
It could be future, but they are nearly efficient enough to be functional.
And like Michigan, that do have solar, they're intentional communities or collective communities, and they have community shared space, and as part of that community shared space is community gardens and community solar, to offset everyone's cost. So, yeah, I, I, we might not be there yet, but people are making inroads. And I would like to encourage them to make these inroads, but I still agree that when it comes to ground-mounted, it should be conditional, just to make sure that neighboring property owners will not be negatively impacted.
Yes, too much green space.
Well, have you heard about AgriVortex?
What?
You, you, you can, so they build it seven feet high, and then you can do agricultural shrines underneath it. I've seen a big solar from northeast of Ohio, if this is done, eight hundred acres, they actually raise sugar beets underneath the solar panels.
I mean, luckily, we don't have that much acreage to work with.
But I'm saying, it's possible.
Yeah.
Technology is evolving so fast, I would, I would rather add a catch-all, other solar category also.
Or alternative energy.
Catch-all, yeah.
Alternative energy.
Other, alternative energy, all the conditional approvals, yeah.
So, uh, just kind of recap our discussion here, so, so I have my, my take with marketing words, like, I think we're generally going to work with integrated, for example, solar be, I think, about everywhere, uh, the ground mounted and solar farm would be more, more, versus if you, if you keep.
And that would be available in pretty much any zoning category, conditional use.
Yes, so the, um, if you see on that, that first one there, so my, this was, I guess, this was the first staff at it, so I had permitted, uh, in the plus, in terms of industrial, uh, and traditionally, uh, in farm residential, uh, for, for.
Oh, small solar, yeah.
Didn't you say it was additional? Yeah, I, I put, put a, a whole, I, yes. And so that, and going down to the line, so that was, uh, well, integrated solar energy system, so that was really, uh, the goal for, uh, we encountered another such solar system, uh, I mean, I had permitted that. We're on the right track there, uh, here, we'll tighten up those definitions, uh, to make sure that it's generally efficient, or ground mounted is more official, uh, in the, in the.
Yeah. Anything else on this page?
Uh, I'll just briefly point out, uh, so the home-based business, uh, is kind of meant to be that very, uh, small-scale, uh, home-based business, that, you know, some of these private businesses out there at home, but it does necessarily, they want customers coming there, if they're not making factories, they, uh, we do outline that a little more rigorously in a, a later section in the second article, uh, but essentially, as our home, traditionally, when we have home-based businesses, we prevent home occupations, have our co-firmly set up, and how, uh, equally, so traditionally has been over the last few years, so we have to get a conditional use for, just about any home-based business. This will kind of separate out major and minor home-based businesses, uh, so that if you're just doing all this work, uh, if you're just renting a house, this is how this is how this is, that you may not necessarily have to have a conditional use for the, so if you feel, uh, we outline that, uh, since those major and minor, major home occupations will still have to.
Would, would a luxury car rental business run out of your home, consider?
I think if they're just doing office work, that, yeah, if they were, they were storing vehicles on the property and having clients from, and, and, like that, then that would trigger them.
But they'll be conditional approval for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I would prefer to wait till we get to section zero five point zero six, because I actually have questions about that, but I don't know how the other commission members feel. Okay, we'll punt.
I, I just, the only comment I had on this page is if we wanted, I don't know, for a private garage, if we wanted to make that a conditional use for farm residential.
I have concerns about that.
Okay.
Just.
I'm just thinking if they would have.
My, I'm wrong, but agricultural use has been very difficult to prove that that private garage is not for agricultural use. And I guess that's my concern, is, because I, my thought that with farm residential or agricultural use, you have a very broad way on what you can do with your property, what you can do with agricultural buildings and things of that nature, unless that's changed here in Ohio.
Yeah, so, uh, and just, uh, this, all throughout these table, uh, the definition of private garage, uh, which is a detached accessory building, for the principal building use, or for either automobile, for drivers, uh, by the owners or tenants of the lot, or by persons, other homeowners or tenants of the lot, try to figure that out, or, um, so really, any private garage would be permitted everywhere under that definition.
Yes.
So what we may want to do is separate how, uh, whether it's for use, if you can correct me if this is possible, but separate out when it's for use by the property owner, when it's for use by somebody.
Okay, so, to really just clarify in the definition, because that was my thought, I was like, I mean, if, if, if a residential lot wants to have a detached garage for extra vehicles, that's kind of what.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we just, uh, maybe that, the private garage is not permitted, that, uh, fairly not permitted, people that, have, have.
Yeah, um, and that may or may not be for personal and or agricultural use, but I.
I do make the agricultural exception, I hear, I have a discussion entirely.
Uh, but I do agree with you that if it's a private garage that is not for personal use, but for leasing parking spaces, that should be, um, reviewed.
So, one thought that I have is for private garages that are more for personal use, that's usually an accessory use, not necessar, in a residential district. And so, so that's one thing that I don't think that the township wants to accidentally walk into of identifying, is it a permitted use? But it would be a permitted accessory use, so long as it's incidental to, or secondary to, single-family home, um, okay.
So if it's an accessory use, well, I don't think we, we did not list accessory uses in here, so, just, you know, if that, if private garage is gonna be permitted throughout, then, and we think, and we all think it's more for the own personal use, then that should be strike out and just considered an accessory use, okay.
If you have people with two or three private garages, people run down, and they can come by, you can use it for a car.
Right.
How much people, and you, you do that, when, I have, is there a residential, uh?
Well, I'm thinking of like multifamily, um, units where, let's say you have a row of townhouses or a row of condos, and you have garages. And that sometimes with the lease of an apartment or with a condo, you might get a specific garage. Or you might just have to lease it separately, that it's not part, and then that opens like a whole, for me, can of worms of, is it personal use or is it leased? And whether or not that should be regulated, as opposed to anybody can lease out a garage.
Yeah, I mean, if, when you rent down a condo, uh, and you get eight, eight or two states, and then shared garage, uh, I don't, if, we should treat that any differently, whether it's included in the lease or condo, or when you're, if you pay the, the per garage, as long as you're a resident there.
So I've known in other jurisdictions, I don't know, you know, or we aren't here yet, New Orange Township hopefully, where you might have an apartment complex or a townhouse complex or whatever, and they will lease out vacant garage spaces or available garage spaces to somebody else, like in the short north, to use for, you know, business purposes, to use for, "I don't live there, but I work down there, so I'm going to lease a spot."
See, that happens more in the bigger cities.
Exactly, we're not, we're not there yet.
We're nowhere there at all.
We're not there yet, but I have, that would be one thing where I would have concerns, because I would feel that as a resident, I would wanna have some control over leased spots in my residence.
I'd like to think that would be some form of a zoning violation, if they are treating a residential garage for commercial use. So, I, you know, if we heard something like that could happen, we could pursue action, so.
I mean, I can imagine that happening in the future with, uh, the Evans Farms right next to there, building a big sports complex.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a very popular game, and you have like a hundred, hundred, or a thousand cars come in, they want to park everywhere, they would, they would love, and the residents would love to sell their yard space for that day, to make a quick buck, right?
Um, I have no problem with, like, I know people do that for, like, parades or whatever.
Exactly.
Like Mirfield.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know, I.
Yeah, Mirfield's actually a good example of where people lease out.
Their house, right.
House or garage space or whatever.
Yeah, I, I, well, we'll look at these definitions, uh, kind of, arrows in these tables, and I think we'll make some provisions here. Just noting that private garage is simply for, if you were automobile, and then public apartment garage is higher for vehicles. But I think the, the goal of this was to restrict where, you know, big parking garages could locate, so if somebody doesn't build a, a, a parking garage, and, or, or, it's just a small street example, um, but, but to try to prevent that, not necessarily to get it to the minority, I think, uh.
People are doing with their property.
So, I, that, it does, thank you for pointing that out, that does warrant some conditional scrutiny, um, so let us look into that. Both the definitions and the used examples based on those definitions.
Next page, or?
Let's do it.
Do it, all right.
Let's do it.
All right, so again, there's the, the heavy industrial, uh, is conditionally permitted, uh, in the plus, and then, uh, light industrial is permitted, uh, both emergency boardroom and the plus. Uh, light industrial is permitted, uh, both emergency boardroom and plus employment. Uh, we're having logistics, we have slightly more intense use permitted, plus employment, conditionally permitted.
So I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, so like adult entertainment business, I know we have to provide for that. Uh, so we have to have a conditional use for select locations, not with near like a school or daycare or anything like that, or a church residence, what have you. Uh, with marijuana facility, do we also have to provide for that or can we totally exclude it like we have right now?
So there's a new updates from that. So the trustees, uh, did, uh, pass a resolution to, and actually, please tell me if I'm wrong, uh, to permit, um, a marijuana, uh, dispense, or sorry, dispensary, yeah, dispensary. So the, the sale of marijuana, um, at a maximum of two, uh, in the township. And then how that is defined is considered commercial retail. So, um, I believe the reason why it's blank here is because we, it, we, we already have two permits in place. We're assuming we're not going to be having any more. Um, so that's.
So, and so we could look at these definitions also, just to make them, maybe the title should change because I think there are these. So marijuana facility, as defined by the trustees, the resolution was the processing.
Okay, okay.
Retail dispensary would not call under this definition of marijuana facility. And so the, the trustees' resolution explicitly prohibited the, the growing and cultivation.
And we can do that legally? Okay. I just, that's why I'm asking you.
Two.
Yes, that we're only, go ahead, just walked out. We're only having the, the retail sales, the distribution, okay. No cultivation. And plus the cultivation places take up a lot of space.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would take up a lot of space and, um, not that I am advocating that we should have one of those facilities in our township. I just want to make sure that we are not legally required to have one.
We are permitting two.
So, uh, I have a quick question on that specifically. Going back to previous page, agriculture is permitted everywhere. And in a farm residential, a family can grow up to twelve plants, as per state law, right?
Each adult six plants.
But a family is.
But as long as you're not selling it, right?
Yeah, you can sell it.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a regulation, yeah.
Farm residential outside in front of their home.
Yep.
Correct. The, the township zoning resolution does not impede whatever, um, whatever you're permitted to grow in your backyard, the township zoning resolution doesn't prohibit that and, and I don't think that the township would be able to.
Regulate or anything.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so if.
Probably going to go out there and start cutting.
So if your neighbor decides to start growing their twelve plants in their backyard, there's nothing you can do about it.
Six per adult. A family can be a family of one. I mean, that's, that's a definition of a family in the homeless shelter, so it doesn't have to be two adults in the household.
Um, I have a question on this slide is the beverage brewing. So there are folks who hobby brew here in their garages.
That would be a home base, right?
That would not be counted here.
I do think the definitions related to, um, all, all of the beverage definitions relate to a commercial activity.
Okay.
So not just a, again, I'm a hobby, I've got a hobby in my garage, there's a, there's a commercial component.
Yes, you're correct. It was a production of establishment where beer and all that is spirits are made on a premises, then sold or distributed either by wholesale or PTO. Uh, so this, this would not, you know, somebody home brewing it further on personal use would not.
Is calling a bunch of friends and drinking together considered distribution?
Once the sheriff department lets you show up. Do we have a definition of the beverage distribution? Because I'm assuming that's like wholesale distribution as opposed to retail distribution? Which would be beverage sales?
Uh, that makes sense to me.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think once, we, we'll cross check all these uses here to make sure there are definitions.
And it's clear of what you mean, but like I said, I assume distribution wholesale versus like retail, which would be the sales. Well, I was just thinking there's, um, behind the Walmart, there's some beverage distribution of beer or something like that. I forget which branch it is, but which for me. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. I'm assuming that's what beverage distribution is for, okay.
Do I interpret correctly that we have separate definitions for beverage distribution in the whole floor?
And one final question, why is an art studio not allowed on a farm residential?
Why is it not? I'm sorry?
Art studio?
Oh, art studio.
Not allowed?
I can see it being conditional on farm residential, as opposed to a, a residential town.
Yeah, conditional, just like neighborhoods should be conditional, right?
Yeah, I'd almost say, um, antique shop might be conditional for farm residential as well. Because they have a lot of, some places have barns with stuff off, like Garth's Auction House. Or what used to be Garth's, um.
Yeah, makes sense.
Would, for me, but make it conditional so that if someone wants to open up a antique store, whatever, out of their barn.
Alright.
What about the farms there? That's going to fall on their, that'll, that'll.
No, and, and that's a great question. So, um, in Ohio, ag is king. And there are very specific restrictions on what the township can restrict with respect to farm markets and that type of thing. And so the language that we've included in the zoning resolution mirrors the statute. It basically, it restricts what you're able to restrict, which basically is.
And it also handles, I assume, uh, what I want to call agribusiness, agro.
Tourism, agritourism, yes.
Like weeds farm, apple picking, pumpkin harvesting, corn mazes.
Absolutely. And, and the language is, um, again, basically out of the statute. And so, um, a lot of agricultural, the agricultural restrictions, you have to affirmatively put the restrictions in there. Otherwise it, it is, you know, it's kind of, anything goes, so.
Alright, are there any other questions on this page or can we move forward?
Forward.
Okay, let's make it so. Get to this table tonight.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great if you guys could do that. I think we can.
Car wash is always a, a, so that would be conditionally permitted, commercial boardroom, uh, would be permitted plus employment.
Or new ones.
Yeah, again, any, any use that's existing currently is going to be permitted to remain as it is plus this.
And all these permitted uses are, are as if they're in these, these districts and all the planned districts, which is the majority of the township, are not. So they would follow the standards within their own planned district. So again, yeah, future, future, this is all really for future. I mean, FR one could maybe have the most immediate impact to this because that's the only straight district that's, could change. I think that's fair to say, but.
Mostly yes and not this.
Okay, alright, yeah. But yeah, all of this doesn't impact the planned districts that have their own unique permitted and prohibited uses within them.
So I don't know how to have this discussion because I know with drive-throughs and the whole Route twenty-three overlay, which we got rid of, there were like conditional use for drive-throughs and things like that. So, um, right now we're allowing them anywhere that's commercial and conditional use in flex employment. So that basically means anything zone commercial, including like parts of Evans Farm or something like that could have a drive-through, is that correct?
If it is owned to.
Yeah, that since Evans has its own, yeah.
Okay.
We have this, we later talked in, but there are considered provisions, standards for.
Drive-throughs.
For drive-throughs, which we don't have for.
Alright, well then I feel better about it because I do not want to see drive-throughs in every commercial area. So as long as there's regulations of like accessibility, you know, major traffic areas as opposed to subsidiary roads or impact on neighborhoods or what have you, okay.
Yeah, we want the, we want the regulations, but if it's based on residential district.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That's pretty nice.
Well, again, I, college or fairly established, they're done with this in terms of this condition, all the, the boardroom and all the, 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 like, one of these industrial, period industrial properties are, are on the way to.
Residential, that shouldn't be an impact.
I don't think we've gotten to gas stations yet. Got two more pages.
So I actually do have a question about kennels, um, in relation to vet clinics. So a lot of vet clinics have what could be considered kennels associated with them uh, in terms of housing animals overnight. So if it's allowed or conditionally used at the vet, I would include it for the kennel as well so that they can have animals stay there overnight. Now, I don't know if there's, you know, regulations on like how many or like indoors and not outdoors. But, um, I'm just thinking, like I said, of most, if I bring my animal to a vet and they need to be swatched overnight, I'm assuming that means they have to have a kennel attached to them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So same, like permissions for both the vet clinic and the kennel.
Yeah, or you could have it at the vet clinic and just have it be conditional, the kennel. And the other thing conditional for a kennel, I would probably put under farm residential as well. Because I do know some people take their animals to like doggy daycare at the farm, which would be considered like a kennel. Is that correct? Or is that even not something you have to think about because of, um, agricultural uses?
So, so what I was going to say on, um, you know, don't disagree in terms of, of mirroring the, the vet and kennel, um, question. What I was going to say is there is, um, there's more and more case law coming out about kennels. And believe it or not, they are considered agriculture. And, and the case law is being, um, so, so in terms of specifically permitting, absolutely, you know, that's something that you, you have the ability to do. But something that we will have to, to piece out is making sure that, um, you haven't attempted to restrict in a, in a situation where you don't have the ability to restrict under agriculture. One thing to keep in mind with, so there, again, it's, I mean, I think we're going to get more and more case law because everybody has doggy daycares and, and that sort of thing. So, so overnight care, that sort of thing, clearly agriculture. But there are, uh, there's cases in terms of extra services of, you know, in terms of, um, you know, grooming services. Or there was, there was, believe it or not, there was a lawsuit about a crematorium for, um, for your pets. And, um, so, so things like that, just wanted to at least mention that.
So if kennel is become, is going to be considered agriculture, should we, do we even need that as a use and then it just falls into agriculture?
So I think, the one caveat though, because if, um, let me think that through.
Yeah, because I mean, I think we have to permit agriculture everywhere because they are.
The, the, the pet centers, I'm familiar with them, all the pets. They're in small commercial areas, not next residential up in Green Meadows, there's the vet clinic, there's a doggy daycare next door. I don't see where they bother anybody. And there's also, also a daycare next to them right in between them. Because in Green Meadows, you know, okay? And, and those, I, I, I mean, they're not in residential areas. And of course, the big, big guys, they're in Columbus, that's Medved, they're up there on, uh, Wilson Bridge, up nearby the Redbone Tracks. And again, on a very commercial business district, none of those are in residential areas, and nor should they.
So I, I.
So is there like a residential versus commercial kennel then? Is that?
Too much traffic, too much car traffic.
Like an in-house. So in the township does have the ability to regulate agri, you can prohibit agriculture on any lot under one acre. So, so that would prevent a situation of somebody having an in-house kennel. But I think that goes back to Christine's comment of we maybe want to permit kennels in, um, districts with vets or permit that type of thing. So I think we'll probably have to look at just all of the cross-sections, just to make sure that ag kennels are none. Because you, I think you do have ag as a permitted use in every.
Yeah.
District.
Good question.
That was it I had for this page. Does anybody else on the commission? Can we move on to the next then? Keep going.
And one thing that Robin and I, just so the commission is aware, one thing we've talked about and made provisions to. So, um, I don't know if it was the apartment lobbying industry, but, um, in the last few years or so, the definition was included into that, basically, it's called a residential hotel. And a residential hotel is basically in a, it's an apartment complex. But it is just couched as something that.
So is it for short-term leasing versus long-term leasing?
It's thirty days and, and more. And it's a statutory definition, and if you don't specifically regulate it, it is considered a ho, it is considered a hotel. And so it's a way for apartment complexes to come in under the guise of it's a, it's a hotel. And so Robin and I have updated the, the def, I was, obviously there's, you know, working through with, um, clarifying the various definitions, but that is something that's been carved out to make sure that, um, one of these residential hotels, um, is not going to come in under the guise of one of your hotel definitions.
Okay. So, um, do you have a definition of personal services?
You should.
Okay, so, because I don't know if it's like, you know, an accountant or like a professional consultant, you know, or if it's like hair and nails.
Yeah, generally the, the hair and nails, so on the whole definition.
No.
But it's, an establishment provides non-medical services, including, but not limited to, salon, barber shop, candy salon, by license, professionals. Such as that, establishment may also produce a three-day sale.
Okay, so...
And they're allowed in conditional use for neighborhood?
So, yeah, I think that's another thing. I don't know if we've touched on that just yet. But, um, this, I think the things that I noticed is, um, you know, we're, we're having a lot more conditional uses than we've ever done before, which we advocate for, um, as far as, you know, having the ability to go through a special use type of permitting, but still have the public input and have a hearing with it. So that is going to be new with the BZA as they will see probably more conditional uses than they've ever seen before. Um, and then the other thing too is that we are, the, the zoning team and I have been open to, um, allowing lighter commercial uses in they, in, in residential zones that are not allowed at all. So, you know, having like a coffee shop in the middle of a residential is that, it's something that the commission would be interested in ta, partaking. So that's kind of the lens that we took with these conditional uses. So if, if, should there be a small hair salon in, in, in a residential neighborhood? If, if, if it can be. So that is very new as in this code. But just again, something to keep in mind. But we, but when you see those conditional uses in the ne, in the residential zones, it's, the intent is to have one lighter commercial uses to be allowed. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
I, I think that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think it creates some diversity in the, in the, in the, in the neighborhood and...
Yep.
Yeah, the walkability part.
And I already know people have it as like a home use, a home occupation anyway of where they might invite people over and cut their hair.
Sure. Or operate out of small, um, beauty salon out of their basement. Yeah, should be.
So in terms of research laboratory facility, is there a square footage limit? I gotta go back and check my definitions, but... Alright.
Each of the districts would have, do we, are we regulating lot coverage? Okay, so in theory, that should be helping with, you know, having a ginormous box of something. I mean, there's still going to be setbacks, lot coverage, landscaping, all that, so. I don't know, having a square footage limit for all uses is going to be doable, but... Yeah, is the board interested in doing conditional uses for personal services at F R one?
I think that's the only way you could.
Right.
Because, because you have to know that it was more walk-in, more than drive, drivable traffic with respect to a neighborhood. So, yeah, that always all has to be conditional.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with that.
I think it's a good idea leaving it open, but yes.
And Christine, going back to your comment on the re, the research facility, are, is there...
It's just because like when I think of research or laboratory facility, I think of, you know, I'm not worried about like LabCorp where you draw your blood. I'm more worried about if it's like a, um, mini pilot plan or if it's more like an industrial, um, lab or research facility, which I have no problems in the commercial, I have no problems in the industrial. And the mixed use, I might not want that next to housing. So maybe I'd rather have that conditional there, if that makes sense.
Con, oh, yeah, conditional and a mixed use?
Yeah. I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem with it. It's just like a, a scale issue of, you know, if it's something, you know...
Yeah.
Simple, um, versus, you know, I'm mixing, you know, industrial processes or I'm doing a mini pilot plan or something like that. What was that?
Yeah.
But, uh, should be conditional because if there's a, um, blood donation facility or something like that, should be allowed in a mixed use.
Exactly, yeah. So that's why, because I don't have a problem with a, a small-scale one. But more concerned about large-scale. I have nothing. I know we talked about definitions, so is there... So it looks like on the next page is where we hit gas stations.
Yes.
Do we have, um... I'm trying to figure out how to put it. Lewis Center Village, I like to have the, keep what they have there now. I really don't want to see like a sheets open up in Lewis Center Village.
Yeah.
Or just make conditional so that if you're there right now, like, you know, I know there's like a custard place and a few other little places there, which I think are great. And the convenience store there, if it was walkable, would be great. But I...
Well, wouldn't that Lewis Center overlay take care of that? Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't that also, you couldn't have the sheets because Lewis Center overlay wouldn't allow them the, the space and land use that, that they wanted. So it, it would, that, it would seem that if you, if you stuck to that, it would take care of anything large coming in.
Unless they bought several lots of consolidator.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you held to the development standards, they, 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 they wouldn't be interested.
Yeah, I don't know. I feel like one could make it work if they, if we see that it's permitted. So I'd rather just take it out entirely.
Yeah, take it out, yeah.
Like I said, or make it conditional use and have it reviewed. But just by, I said, I don't want to shade hints.
But yeah, and the intent with the Lewis Center Village District overlay is kind of to ke, keep, because it is actually one of the only mixed-use original districts that we have. So having those light uses, um, and also having an opportunity for people to come in and build and not ask for a hundred variances is the, is the goal. Yeah.
And, and protect against a situation where someone has a large piece of acreage, rezones to this district and, and just increases density, so.
Right. Yeah, it's only subject to the existing village.
Yeah, so if somebody came in and bought half of Lewis, Lewis Center and wanted to put something major there, wouldn't that have to go through approval at, for BZA or for zoning at some point?
Well, they're gonna have to, anything, they're gonna, how it's written, they would have to apply for, it's, it's kind of how we did the Route 23 overlay district. So they would have to apply, um, and go through, um, some type of board approval process. Right now, we're proposing it to, uh, the, um, you know, have the zoning commission kind of be the, the authoritative bu, board to take that action on that. Um, whereas the overlay was ultimately the trustee's decision, so.
Because I can see that come up just because sitting across the street from Evan's Farm, that is going to, probably is going to show up at some point.
Yeah, is that the one?
Just because of their geography.
Well, I guess it's good to look at, see what we would be willing to have there.
Yeah, so I think that requires further investigation.
Yeah.
I'm sure our water or gas station would apply like ten times, like that, right? Anyways, my question was retail store under small, under four thousand, uh, GFA is again...
Uh, gross floor area.
Gross floor, yeah, yeah. So that versus the personal services thing. So if we allow that conditionally in neighborhood, should we allow this in conditionally in neighborhood?
What would be the change? Sorry. Oh, for neighborhood and F R one. Yeah.
Again, walk, uh, walkability.
Makes sense.
I mean, I would love to have more mom and pop convenience stores show up rather than big box retail.
So short-term rentals, we are able to regulate? Okay, just there's, it's, the legislation is all, is depending on the day, I feel like, so.
So, um, what Robin and I have talked about is short-term, and, and you guys are not alone in wanting to restrict short-term rentals. It is, um, probably ripe for a lawsuit, to be honest, of, of the ability to restrict. Because at the end of the day, how do you differ, and, and what, what we had talked about, um, specifically was, you know, how do you differentiate between something that is still, it's still a residential use? You know, it's still a house or it's an apartment. I mean, that's the biggest concern of someone's, it's a, a single-family subdivision and they've got a party house or just a house that's on Airbnb and it's rented. You know, at the end of the day, from a use perspective, it's still underlying residential, even though there is a small commercial component. But the township doesn't regulate houses that are rented for longer term.
Well, that was actually one of my questions of, um, corporate entities buying single-family homes and then leasing them out, um, as, and as opposed, or potentially short-term rentals, as opposed to a homeowner being able to buy it. And how does that fit in with the short-term rental?
And I think, so I, again, the, the argument is, is the, is the, does the commercial component somehow change it so it's no longer a residential use? Because at the end of the day, it's still a residential district. And, um, and so even though, though it's being rented for a short-term, it's being rented for, by some, by a commercial entity or that type of thing, it is very difficult to thread the needle, and I, I don't know if it's possible to thread the needle. One thing that we have talked about, and, um, I think possible, um, real differentiation is just trying to hear more about kind of these party houses or that sort of thing. Where it's, look, no one's actually sleeping here. This isn't, this is more of an event space than anything else that people rent in order to, um, again, throw a party, but nobody's actually staying the night over. You know, I think that might be the possibility of a lawsuit that, yeah, it is in violation of, um, you know, the zoning district and that sort of thing. But, um, again, if, if, there's always a first. And certainly if, if the township were to, you know, we're not aware of anyone actually restricting short-term rentals, but something everybody's asking about. And it's hard to believe, but it's still a pretty recent phenomenon. And I'm trying to think of when I first heard about Airbnb and, you know, it's maybe been around for, um, enough months. So Robin knows.
How many states is the short-term, is considered short-term? Under thirty? I think there is a recent lawsuit with the Airbnbs and the VRBOs right now because of the affordable housing issue. There's a big lawsuit right now.
And I know, um, the Planning Association, that communities have tried to regulate it. But again, I think it's because their cities, um, and they're trying to make sure that, um, residents have affordable housing and it's not all used up by, um, people coming for short-term vacations, exactly. And there's one down the street from where I live that some of the neighbors have complained about. Yeah, the one in my neighborhood, the only issue is when it becomes a party house. I'll be honest. I don't think anybody cares, uh, as long as it's quiet and maintained. But I do believe, uh, some of the neighbors have talked about that some of the, um, guests, um, were using it as a party house.
And something to, which obviously that conduct is really, is incredibly frustrating. And there are other governmental avenues for addressing it, again, with, again, calling the cops.
Yeah, well, that's pretty much, I think, what neighbors have done.
Or if you're in an HOA, you know, the HOA has, have, you know, this is nuisance behavior. Certainly if someone were to, um, I mean, if they were to trash the place, and it just became, uh, you know, just a rundown property, then the township might have some other options in terms of, um, in terms of enforcement. But just right now on the zoning landscape, it is, um, it, it's uncharted territory.
Yeah, and, and if there is legislation that we actually can take on and enforce, that, again, this isn't forever. We can always add that in the future. But yeah, I mean, adding something that is murky territory is the words we're using. I, I just, it, it is a risk for us to add.
As I say, in this case, I defer legal of what we can and can't do. And if we can't regulate it, we should probably stay out of it just to protect the township. As much as, you know, I know some of my neighbors would like to regulate the party house down the street.
And they may, if somebody looks at the zoning... Someone looks at this, they may think we can do a lot more than we actually can. So that's, that's not a good look either, so.
And, and I assure you, the second that we become aware or if like, you know, we will...
We'll be on it.
Work with staff and, and everyone will be on it. But just as of right now, it, it, you might be able to, but it is just such a, it's just such a gray area and, and murky waters.
And there are many other ways of doing it. HOAs. And there are many other ways of doing it, uh HOAs.
No, because for for the purposes of zoning, the the regulation is the use of the property itself and zoning doesn't take into account um how the property is owned. And and taking it a step farther, um, cause I I I know that more often than not, if a property is held by an entity of some sort, it may be a rental, it may be a commercial property, but what I can also say is that sometimes folks have their own, you know, unique um estate planning or unique um reasons for and private reasons for having properties in uh an LLC or an entity name that might still be owner occupied. But but yeah, for purposes of zoning, that's not something that can be regulated.
So I do have a question about standalone drive-through facility um and whether or not it should be a conditional use in mixed use. Cause in my mind, a mixed-use district is supposed to be walkable. And if you have a bunch of standalone drive-throughs, it's not promoting walkable community.
Makes sense.
So not that I want to discount it, but I would rather see it regulated to like only have a certain number allowed or whatever, uh because then you're turning your mixed-use center into a commercial corridor. That's just, I don't know how other people in the commission feel, but okay. And then the only other question I had was the vehicle repair garage, heavy vehicles. Are we allowed to not have them or do we have to have it as a conditional use in our industrial district?
I want to check the definition first.
Okay. Cause I'm assuming the heavy vehicle repair is like um truck repair or um tractor repair or something.
I feel like we have to find a way for it.
What was that?
I feel like we have to find some avenue for for any use.
That's what I was saying, is maybe make it conditional under flex employment zone, which is our industrial zone and have it conditional there. So basically, I highlighted stuff that was like not allowed at all, because I was concerned about the legality of it.
Me too.
Which is why we have legal counsel to keep us straight.
Do you wonder how much a, like how much is like an F one fifty weigh?
I don't know. I would just say, I I assumed it was like, you know, semi-trucks, tractors, um.
Right.
Combine harvesters, whatever, which would make sense under the a flex employment zone and, you know.
Fifty-eight hundred pounds. Up two.
Are there very restrictions for that mixed use? Well, not not for the trucks, but just back to that a minute. Are are there restrictions as to what kind of businesses and things can be?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. This row here.
How many wheels, et cetera? So I'm assuming like um RVs or whatever would fall under that as well. So I would feel just that we had it. We can look at it. Mostly because there's um a lot of RVs that are being sold in the area of Allen Creek um that would potentially need service.
All right, anything else on this page?
And I assume when you mean vehicle sales and service, you mean like auto dealerships?
Yeah.
Which we have, certain areas of twenty-three have been um heavily developed by auto dealerships and I would rather see another form of growth along twenty-three.
Are those in the township? Okay.
I don't think we can do that. Cause we've had people complain about, you know, I don't want McDonald's, I want something different. And I was like, a commercial use is a commercial use according to our zoning code. We can't restrict who wants to move and develop a property in terms of who they are, McDonald's versus Wendy's versus Panera.
Yes, yes.
And I'm not talking about brand, I'm talking about how people don't want fast food.
Yeah.
Versus another.
Yeah, I mean, if you if you allow a gas station in a district and every parcel is in that district and in theory, every parcel can be a gas station.
Yes, we have a room full of people complaining, yes, but there'd be very little, it could be tough to to re- re- reject it.
I mean, if I was a car wash, I wouldn't wanna build right next to a car wash, but I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, they do their own marketing decisions based on things like that.
Yeah.
So yeah, and like, like Dennis said, we've had rooms full of people complaining, well, yes, I want commercial use, I just don't want fast food and we're like, we have no control over that. Welcome to America, um, you know, we're market-driven.
I would like to say if if you want absolute control over the property, then you need to buy it.
You don't, that's right.
Exactly.
You need to. And not everything can be a park. All right, um, can we move on to the next page?
Sure.
That's what I was about ready to look up, the definition of that, cause I mean, is that like a cell tower versus um like a Verizon store? I would like to think it's a cell tower, not a Verizon store, but that's what I'm getting at. Other people might think a Verizon store or an Apple store is essential.
Is that what it's called, a central communications facility or did we just like?
That was the central definition.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was like we use like utility or I don't know, something that like pops out a little more when we see.
You may want to consider changing the defined term to like a like telecommunications.
Yeah.
Basically the statutory term for it.
Yeah, cause I that can be, I mean, I know we'll have a definition, but I wouldn't even know to look for that if I was, I don't know.
Looking for a cell tower?
Yeah.
Or um, we don't have them anymore, those little um like radar installation or something. So what's the definition of an art center versus a community center? And why is it community centers have greater uses than art centers?
Like our pool would be a community center, you know?
Yeah, so what what do you consider? I consider like an art center like, I don't know, somewhere like that might have like a pottery studio and a paint studio or something like that. So, you know, in my mind, where you have a community center, you should have an art center as well because it's actually a less intensive use than a community center.
I mean, is it is it just like, maybe maybe is it public versus private centers? I don't know.
What do you think of the community center in Westerville or Worthington and they have various activities that go on there? An art center, I think, more is like a little studio, like across from the Worthington Library, you go on a park.
That was my question. We previously, I mean, an art studio, what is the difference between art center and art studio again?
So my just, yeah, so my just thought was that where you have community centers allowed, you should have art centers allowed. And if you have concerns, just have them as conditional use. So like I could see, I could see like an art center, you can have a community center in a neighborhood zone, why can't you have an art center? Why can't you have, you know, like a pottery studio or paint studio?
So same for arts and community center?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so in that case, I'm thinking of an art center as like Worthington Art Center or just like one up in Delaware.
The Castle, the Castle.
The Castle, exactly, where you go and you do stuff, not a performing art center, which would be like the Met or something like that. So, you know, but I think I think of an art center as like, you know, sometimes like you said, the castle, it's an old house. They've turned it into spaces or old schools. There's one, um, God, where is it? Um, it's an old school that was part that's been turned into like an art center where you have like pottery space and things like that.
But by the definition that Robert read, it is basically a museum, right? Yeah. Uh, my question is on the event center. So if you look at Little Bear Loop, they have they have this golf, typically with golf courses in the centers. It's a it's called a community center, but it is also a event center. When marriage has happened, things happen, so should we not give a neighborhood zone conditional use?
I'm not sure if that's like an. See, I thought that was more like a private.
That's private for Little Bear. No, because it used to be because somebody else bought it.
We allow to make it public, but originally it was like a private.
It was private to Little Bear.
Yeah, but I mean, I have a. Yeah, I was gonna say, I know somebody that just got married there, they didn't live there, so.
It's a US center, right?
The zoning is very u- unique, that planned district.
So the the issue I have with like event centers in like neighborhood zones or community zones is depending upon the scale of the event center, you have parking issues. Like there, because it was like originally a clubhouse, they have parking provided. But if I take like, you know, an old farmhouse in Lewis Center and decide to turn it into a wedding venue or, you know, an older house, then I have to look at parking.
Every new neighborhood that is being constructed has a clubhouse.
Yeah.
Actually, in the future, that clubhouse could ultimately just like Little Bear.
Like an event center.
Could become an event center, so that's why, do we want to clarify the.
I guess like it, well, that could fall into like a mixed-use district, right? Yeah, if someone, if there was another Little Bear product, cause Little, there wasn't, we don't have any mixed use until this, so um.
Or would Little Bear be considered a mixed use then?
I don't know, I'm just saying like if we got an application like that today, should would it's somebody like Little Bear is like, hey, I want a single-family housing, but I want an event center and a golf course and this, this, this. We may consider them falling into like a mixed-use district now. Or a P A, yeah, yeah.
With like a golf course community or something like that.
And that's always an option, you know, for any, any of this, so.
And which is the, which is more common with the newer uh single-family uh communities growing, if you look at.
Oh, yeah, I'm, yeah, I think if you permitted it in a neighborhood zone, you could, that could, uh, well, I don't know. I guess they're all planned districts now, but if some, if a single-family district comes in, just a single family and has like a clubhouse as is, and then later on they want to make an event center out of that, I don't know if that's good or bad.
Little Bear is kind of a unique situation because of the golf course and residential. And the event center was relatively large, it wasn't a standard little.
Exactly.
Clubhouse for what we get used to, so I I I consider that already a unique. It was one of the first things of its kind in Orange Township. That was a long time ago, that was pretty, pretty early in the process.
I live in that community, so I know.
There there isn't anything else like it. I can't see anybody else turning their their little clubhouse into what either Little Bear has for their.
Because the private clubhouse, that house is a very small, you may have a couple workout things.
Yeah, a small room.
It's the size.
I know, I know, but to maintain that golf facility has no other way, otherwise they have to increase the HOAs on everybody.
No, 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 I agree with that, I'm saying. That a pri- a private residential up at Glen, not Glen Ross, but any of those, their little clubhouses or residential clubhouse are very small, you have a couple workout facilities, little gyms in there, you have a space with a small kitchenette and that's it, and it wouldn't really be the same, you know.
So what's your definition of a commercial college? I mean, is it like a for-profit or? Or is that what you consider considering like a doc? Okay, I was just thinking as opposed to like, you know, I know Columbus State is sort of outside there, but it's down the road or Doc is down the road, the Delaware area.
Because you have on the next page, school, college, university? I mean, does the commission, do I guess, do does the township need a separate for-profit versus private? I'm thinking, I mean, what is Honda's a for-profit? I'm trying to think of like what are some for, I know, I feel like maybe some of the technical schools might be.
And like DeVry was for-profit when there was a DeVry. And you could say there are some sort of um other like tech training that's considered a for-profit college.
I guess doesn't matter for us.
I don't think for-profit matters one way or the other.
Actually, it matters to me, but.
Like it matters as far as the use goes or?
Um, because I consider for-profit more of a commercial use versus an institutional use, if that makes sense.
If, let's say, tech elevator or someone decides to have a a tech boot camp, take for like a six-month boot camp, is that considered under this? If, so they want a, they want a space, of course, you can put it on the P U D, uh, like, I'm trying to understand. Would a tech elevator?
I mean, we can.
How do we permit that?
We can keep it in, you know, the likelihood of getting one is gonna be slim, but.
But those could literally be any kind of size, so it doesn't have to be giant to be considered in that that kind of facility.
Can be any size.
Yeah, that that's what I'm saying, that's why I think it gets to be tough to say, oh, you know, for-profit matters. It's like, well, it can be any size. Yeah, that, that's why I'm saying, that's why I think it gets to be tough to say, oh, you know, for-profit matters, it's like, well, if it can be any size, what, then it's a matter of a structuring, you're, you're trying to zone it based on it's what it is or where it is, and to me, I don't really, wouldn't really care whether it's nonprofit or for-profit, because I'm assuming it's likely going to be small.
Doesn't have to be. I'm fine with the restrictions it has right now, um, compared to like, um, the schools.
Yeah, I understand your point, but this, the table that it's set up now does look at it as kind of more of a commercial use that should go in the commercial district where it's a school, college, universities, basically, for that.
So since we're in the next page with schools, um, I did have a question about the drug, alcohol, or psychiatric treatment center, and whether or not we're allowed to exclude them, or whether or not we can make, should, need to make them conditional under like flex employment, industrial.
I suppose, so I do think that you probably, you need a, at least a conditional use somewhere. I don't know if industrial is necessarily the best. Perhaps institutional.
I'd say commercial or flex.
Where do we put our hospitals and clinics?
Facility that provides treatment or counseling for persons having drug or alcohol abuse problems or psychiatric illnesses under the supervision of professional healthcare or social service providers.
So is it, um?
It would be institutional when that was, because it's sort of like a hospital with the treatment facility.
One of the two hospitals we have, where are those located?
Yeah.
A commercial.
Are we keeping campus institutional?
That is a question that I had before.
Okay. I, yeah, we don't have to get into much right now, but you know, when we start, when we started looking at the uses, it seemed like campus institutional almost fell into either flex or commercial a lot, so we were like, well, do we want to add this extra zone? Like, what's the incentives for somebody to apply for that zone if they can fall into the others?
The others, yeah.
So, just as something to keep about, think about. But to your drug, alcohol, and psychiatric treatment center needs to fall in somewhere.
So in my mind, it would go under institutional or?
Or.
I was like, I, I don't really consider it commercial, although I know, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, or maybe make them, um, conditional in both.
Yeah, I mean, we have one in a commercial district right now.
Well, I think that's also because we didn't really have an institutional.
Yeah. Or, or it just says any and all types commercials.
Exactly, anything goes here.
Yeah.
Probably from additional, um, definition comment, we were looking at schools. So for primary, for school comma primary and school comma secondary, it talks about a school that's operated by a public or religious institution? Do you think that needs to be cleaned up, because there could be a private school that's not affiliated with a religious institution? Just a minor comment.
Well, I don't think whether or not, it would either be public or private, and religion shouldn't be an issue. It would just be considered one of the private type school facilities. So are we, everybody good with this page?
Yes.
No, I did care, I just wanted to go back. On urgent care, it should, should it reflect the same as clinics, uh, in terms of conditional use for, uh, community living and, um, neighborhoods?
So what's the, what's the definition of urgent care versus clinic? Versus like?
Is it, that, that could be like a twenty-four hour thing, right?
Urgent care, yeah.
Just saying.
It can be. In a clinic, I assume, but is it, when you think of a clinic, is it just like a standalone clinic?
Yeah, I just think like.
Or is it like a CVS that has like the little minute clinic where I get my shots?
Yeah, I don't see it, that's a CVS clinic.
Yeah, because in my mind, urgent care could be twenty-four hours, which means I.
Think you want that next to your house?
Exactly, whereas, yes.
I thought, that, that was my, yeah, I, yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, and same thing with standalone emergency facility, that is even like one up from urgent care of ambulances will be going there at night with.
No, emergency, I can totally understand.
No, yeah, but to me, these days, that depends on its size. You are two hospitals, you're not gonna get that kind of traffic. Anything happens, they're sending you to Riverside or somebody else, there's, you know, they may take some walk-in patients, but they're gonna get you out of there as quick as possible.
Nobody wants to stay at an urgent care longer because it's going to cost me more.
One, one additional thought, um, of perhaps collapsing standalone emergency facility with hospital first service, full service with emergency. Just combine those into the same term or definition, don't know if there's a, and the only difference is additional use of the mixed-use district.
Anything else in this? Oh, well, I think we, are we here now, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Park, yes.
Yay parks.
You can buy the land and make a park anywhere.
I'm assuming that commercial recreation is defined by some type of acreage or area in each of the definitions.
Okay, so, community living zone is, um, basically our multi-family zone?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just thinking about having parking garages as a conditional use there. We were like, depending upon the scale of the development and what its neighboring. Uh, for example, um, like our friends that we saw last week, uh, who were complaining about our four-story, um, and a big parking lot across the street from them, if they had a public parking garage across the street from them, they would have had a condition. So that maybe something like that, uh, in terms of how it impacts, um, residential communities might be best reviewed on a conditional use.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I can't think of any area in Orange Township that could build one of those.
But if it's private, if it's private, so if it's like gated for the residents, is that allowed?
Well, and so we'll have to look at our definition of this again, because the, the definition is they currently stand separated them out by size. So if it was more than five people, then it was considered public.
Okay.
Again, I think we'll have to look at that to clarify, you know, if it's an accessory use or, um.
So, so right now, when I think of public parking garage, I think of, you know, something that like you might have like at a hospital complex, or, um, a large apartment complex or something like that, um, or a large business complex, um, which I would want to regulate if it was in a neighborhood district or next to a residential district.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. I don't know how to, you know, y'all can figure this out and how to make sense of it in terms of these tables and definitions.
I saw one, I was in, went in Hawaii, in Honolulu, had a Home Depot, because the land's so expensive and so limited. This Home Depot had a three-story parking garage, because just the space, didn't have the space for the parking in a lot, but.
And, and parking garages are just so expensive, and so the fact that like this is the most cost-effective option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen that like in Arlington, Virginia.
Yeah, if the, if the space, exactly, if the land is so expensive and space limited, yeah, I.
Or like, you know, public parking garages or, you know, short north house, they're shared.
I saw that happening here in Lewis County, ten years from now, the land is.
Another twenty or thirty years, I think, with that, that kind of thing's absolutely a possibility.
Exactly.
You know, just, just not today.
Okay, so just think about that.
Is utility generation facility the same as essential communications facility?
So I always thought that was like a electric substation.
Okay.
Or potentially a solar or wind facility.
Or water.
Yeah.
So it's interesting, it does mention solar in the definition, but it does not mention, but I think if anything, we'll have to swap those out.
But generally, can we regulate, so, I thought we don't regulate quote-unquote public facilities. So we wouldn't regulate like an AEP substation or a water facility or a store facility or anything like that, correct?
We'll check the legal on that one.
That's why she's here, thank you.
If I want.
See, here I, here I thought it was the industrial zone.
Yes.
So, yeah, I would like look into the definition and then we can get a better idea of what we, is, you know, allowed versus conditional in various areas.
Are we good with allowing accessory dwelling units, because that's, that is, that's a new thing.
So I have no problem with accessory dwelling units, I know in most neighborhood areas, they're, um, gonna be limited by the HOA anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if it's allowed, it's a really great housing tool, but we don't allow that right now. And Evans Farm, yes, Evans Farm's first.
So the question is, it looks like they're allowed in the neighborhood, in the farm.
Conditional use.
Conditional, the conditional, I'm not sure why they're conditional in the campus institutional zone, but not allowed like in the mixed or use or community zone as conditional, what the logic behind that was.
I guess, I mean, would, if you were to have an apartment complex, like, maybe that's the thought process, like, how would you?
I don't have a good answer for why it's included in the campus institutional.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I kind of avoided that question, so I didn't write it. But, yeah, I mean, if it's an apartment complex or any type of multifamily development, to have maybe, yeah, it's kind of already there. So it's really designed for if there's gonna be a single-family home or a, oh, an individual lot, can they have an additional dwelling in their backyard?
So the other question is, are, um, live-work units allowed?
I think they're a mixed use.
Okay. That you would just put that under mixed use, as opposed to have a live-work in a commercial district or live-work as conditional in a residential district? Okay. Just checking, because I, we're not there yet, we don't have the density that like Columbus has where you would have live-work in some neighborhoods.
So at Evans Farm.
Yeah.
So maybe it should be a conditional use in the mixed use, if, if there was like a mini Evans Farm that came, I don't know. Does mixed use have to be mixed-use buildings? I can't remember. Okay, so it could be like a single-family next to a commercial hub, so we could allow the single-family to have ADs? Just something to think about.
Conditionally, it should be in the mixed use.
I mean, I'm just curious, I like, I, I like the idea of live-work units, just because I guess for me, it's like makes sense, it goes back to sort of the traditional, you know, I have an office downstairs and, you know, I live out back or upstairs or something like that. You know, and I think after COVID, like off, the big office space is not what it used to be after COVID, and I could see more, more live-work or more, um, like, I don't call it co-housing, but co, co-work spaces? Okay.
Anything else in this one?
All right, let's move on. Last page. Yay! So again, I had the same question, assisted living facility. Where would we, we would put them, would it be campus institutional, would it be flex?
Yeah, I, we'll have to, I believe, I can, more, there's, I think we might tweak the definitions as well, so if there's an assisted living facility and a senior assisted living facility, which is generally what we think of when we say assisted living. I think the, the just assisted living, not the senior assisted living, there is certain state law that says what we, you know, they, basically if they're under, if there's under four or five people, if they're permitted in any multifamily district or any single-family district, but if it's more than five people or less than twelve, they're multifamily, there's state law that regulates it, so we'll have to double check.
And that's different from like a, a group home where people are more independent but are living in a group home, um, with supervision?
I think we need to, a finer comb, in addition to, to what Robin was saying, but also with the definition of group home and permit supportive housing and skilled care facility, I think there are, um.
Whole spectrum.
Yes, I think there are a variety of places where the Venn di, we just wanna make sure the Venn diagram, uh, is not a circle.
And that everyone is accommodated for various levels of, um, age and being independent. Or what permanent supportive housing might also be in that definition as well.
For the residential units, I mean, is, is there? I guess can the, the density be regulated within the district itself as opposed to in the use table?
So, this is one of your complaints comments, and we will, we'll clarify this in the next revision. So when it's talking about this on the use table, that's the number of units in a specific building.
Okay.
This is not density, this is the building type. Density is referenced in the development standards for each district. But one of the regional planning's comments was that this is ambiguous and I can't agree.
So it's units in the building, not units per like acre?
Yeah. Thanks, I, I did forget about that comment.
Well, your condo can have up to five.
So then with the senior care, skilled care, and transitional dwelling versus, I would sort of tie those definitions into like what we talked about in terms of group home and. Yeah, because I assume when you mean senior independent living facility, it's more like.
Those are the adults that are able to live independently and then they have step-ups with assistive.
Exactly.
Then you may go to memory care.
And that's what I'm thinking as opposed to age-restricted 55 or adult community.
Right.
But I'm thinking of one where you're living independently in your condo or your apartment, but you're in a facility that has a range of care, whatever your level is at that point in your life.
Well, senior living facilities, from a medical perspective, they can live, like the, what is that place up? They have on 36, they have like on 23 before the V I D Act, so they're, those are independent housing, and that is senior, but also senior living facilities can be the building itself that holds all those individuals that are able, they don't need a nursing care, they come and go, they do their thing and.
Yeah, they have like condos or apartments or whatever.
Right, little apartments, like at the Avalon down here behind Home Goods.
Concession stand is not allowed in neighborhood?
Yeah, I, that's one goal, what that, that may be a candidate for a work-related, entirely for a state.
But can we allow a concession stand and, or maybe have a conditional in farm residential?
I think that would, well, I guess.
This qualifies as a temporary statement.
Okay.
Okay.
Like at school?
Because when I think of concession stand, I think of two things. I think of like, you know, a sports complex or like a football field where you're getting like your hot dog and your pop and your whatever. Or I'm thinking, you know, oh, I have a concession stand at the farm market where I'm gonna, you know, get my apple cider and my caramel corn or whatever.
Or my daughter's lemonade stand, if, if, during summer.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
It's okay, you can do it.
I would say I would think you should live there during the summer. I could see something going from like, you know, icees or soda to hot chocolate. Exactly, or tea or, you know. In Germany, you have like mulled wine or something.
Oh, absolutely.
The Evans Farm door, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, I'm all for bringing mulled wine to this stuff. Makes the winters more enjoyable.
Speaking of events, I mean, I don't. Okay, yeah, because I mean, to go through the conditional use process, just in, like, logistically, like, the timing of those, like, couldn't work. And we, we can have, we have a block party or an event permit with the fire department and road. So if they are going to block a, like, we, there are some type of enforcement that we have as a township, so it's, I don't think it's necessary to include in this.
Yeah, but if you have like any sort of like a township moving in the park event or something like that.
Yeah.
It's, or Evans Farm, they have a lot of honorary events that they apply for permits for.
Yep.
I'm content to keep it that way.
Yes, thank you.
Like, we get next week off, right?
We do get, just a small matter.
That's what I said.
Go vote.
Did we take that book home?
Yeah, so, so when you have, well, we should, we might put it in the last.
Look at all the things you thought we were going to get through.
So, we're off next week. We do have a, we're doing a very long commitment for November 12, two weeks. So there's hard copy of that, of an application on that table, so we'll have to make out. I think we'll staff a court on that next week. So again, we have a hearing scheduled for November 12, December 3, and I'm expecting an application to be filed for this center in the next month. So that means we should continue this hearing pending all obligations. We're moving to either November 19 or December 7, those are the two, over the two states that are not holidayed for the rest of the year.
I'd say my own on 19 instead of December after second week.
All right, is everybody else good with continuing this zoning code update meeting to November 19 at 6:30? Can I have a motion?
I move motion back again.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Foster.
Yeah.
You'll put that out, it'll show up on my Outlook. Excellent, I love that.
What would be the goal for the 19th, for us to review? The rest of five and six, is that?
I mean, I think if we get through at least Article 10, I mean, I think once we get to the districts and zones, the development standards, that discussion will go fairly quickly. So I think if we can get through at least Article 10 next time, that would be the goal.
Okay, and you've already discussed about removing the tables from like the little individual sections? And just having one comprehensive table? So we don't have to like cross-reference this? Anything to make things easier. All right, is there any other business before the commission?
I, I'm sorry, so Article 10, what's, like, I, I guess. Because some of, we start the districts in Article 6, is that? Okay, so you want to try to look at four districts at the next meeting? Okay. All right, that's it, sorry.
No, if we can, that'd be great.
Yeah.
All right, well, if there's no other meeting before the commission, I hereby conclude this meeting. There, it's official. Go home, have fun.